So good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 5th, 2025 Litchfield School Board Meeting. We will call the meeting to order, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We are down to a school board member right now, Mr. Shoemaker. We are expecting him to join tonight. And with that, any review or revisions to tonight's agenda?
No.
Hearing none. Consent agenda. Any board members like to move anything off consent tonight?
Nothing to move. Just, we met for the first time for joint law, so if you haven't had a chance to check out, there hasn't been a meeting yet this year, so you wouldn't have had a reason to check it out, but now you have a reason to check it out.
Anything pressing?
No.
Okay.
No.
Summary of non-public actions from our January 22nd, 2024, 2025 meeting? You threw me off there. Mr. Shoemaker motioned to approve the January 15th, 2025 meeting minutes. Mr. Plansky seconded the motion. The motion passed 5-0. Mr. Shoemaker moved to accept the resignation of Annie Pacquinn as a LMS special education teacher. Mrs. Ames seconded the motion, and that also passed 5-0. We have no presentations or recognitions tonight on tonight's agenda, and we're moving right along. We have our student representative report tonight, and we'll turn it over to Nick and Danny for their presentation this evening while the superintendent loads it up on our screen for us. Two minutes, and you're up. How about that?
It's coming, baby.
Hey, welcome.
Thank you.
So we have winter sports first. Boys' basketball is now 11-2, and they have a game on Friday at Summersworth. Girls' basketball have a home game on Friday against Summersworth, and are 2-12. Boys' hockey are 2-6-1, and have a home game today against Belmont and Guilford. And then that picture right there on the right is from their senior night, or no, not their senior night, their Hockey Fights Cancer, where they all wore pink jerseys. So that was nice. And Winter Track has seven athletes that are attending the state meet on Sunday, and Wrestling has a try meet tonight in Lebanon.
Some of the past activities that we have was the boys' basketball had their senior night, and then the GMS Beauty and the Beast Musical was at Campbell a couple nights ago.
So currently going on, we just have one thing, is girls' basketball senior night on the 7th.
Some of our future activities is pretty much all Valentine's Day themed. Student Council, we do strawberry dipping, where we give them out to the entire school. We also are going to start selling carnations soon, and then we're going to be doing our drink cart like we did during the holidays. We have winter carnival that week before break. It has batty advisories, and then we'll have spirit days. We'll have a pep rally on Friday with advisory contests.
And just like overall, the new semester has started, and students are choosing classes for the next year. Winter break, the Campbell Chorus and Concert Band are performing at Universal Studios over break. And yeah, February break is coming up, the 24th, the 28th. That's it. Any questions?
No questions?
Nope.
All right. Thank you for your update. We appreciate it.
No problem.
All right, moving right along in tonight's agenda, we have a community comment on agenda items. This is the first of two community comments. Anybody in the audience care to come up to the board and have a comment tonight? I'm seeing no comments.
No comments.
All right. We'll close this one, and again, there's a second round of comments later this evening. We'll turn it over to Vice Chair Ames for correspondence tonight.
Yes. On January 23rd, the board received an email from Mr. McDonough, CHS teacher and student council advisor, sharing a PDF with reflection items from student councils' semester one activities. On January 23rd, Mike Anaskovich emailed the board with questions regarding a sprinkler system at GMS, and there was a response by Mr. Cutter. On January 24th, the superintendent emailed the board with an update regarding the language for warrant article nine that the board is putting forward. On January 27th, I emailed the board with a reminder about completing the superintendent evaluation survey. On January 27th, Julie Darling emailed the board advising that the budget documents are at Town Hall for signatures, and we needed to sign them as soon as possible. On January 27th, Mike Anaskovich emailed our state reps, but he copied the board, speaking out against SB 101 and discussing the impact on public education. On January 28th, Anne Inamorati emailed the board circulating the payroll manifest for 403B, as well as the LEA LSSA dues payments. On January 28th, the superintendent emailed the board regarding the presidential executive order to pause federal grants and loan disbursement and the impact that would have on the district, including our personnel. There was a response later in the day from the superintendent with an update to that email. On January 29th, Renee Burgess emailed the board circulating the NHSBA special update regarding the pause on federal funding. On January 29th, Renee Burgess emailed the board circulating a reminder that board members can take NHSBA webinars for free as part of our membership. On January 31st, Anne Inamorati emailed the board circulating the accounts payable manifest. There were some questions from Mr. Plansky and responses from Anne Inamorati as well. On January 31st, Anne Inamorati emailed the board providing some backup documentation to answer several questions that were on the manifest. And on January 31st, Renee Burgess emailed the board circulating the draft agenda for the February 5th meeting. On January 31st, Ron Oblenas emailed the FIC and board circulating draft minutes from the January 21st FIC meeting, and there was a response from the superintendent regarding a need to reschedule the tours because of a two-hour delay on Monday. And then on February 4th, Jan Sullivan emailed the board circulating the draft January 22nd public and non-public minutes. And that brings us up to date.
All right. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Next up on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
So I apologize. I've been a little under the weather this week, so if I sound a little froggy, that's why. So the first thing I have is just the PowerPoint for the deliberative session. I shared this out with you all last week, earlier this week, whenever it was. And I know you've been commenting, but I don't know how you want to approach this, if you want to go through it. I know there's some updates that we still got to do based on some of the suggestions there. I apologize. I just haven't had the chance to do that.
That's all right.
And I'm assuming you take different slides in different roles throughout it, so if you want to go through that process of it all. I'm kind of looking to you a little bit right at this moment to help lead this right here.
I can help direct. So, you know, kind of following last week and the town deliberative, and kind of following that same format, you know, slide two
Yep.
will be presented by myself, and just introducing the board and the district representative. Slide three by myself, and then Moderator Perry will take
Oops.
That's all right.
There we go.
Yeah. Moderator Perry will take Article One and read the articles. And if we all agree to that, I have it in the footnotes. You'll see Perry, and we can put that on the slides if we all agree. I'll put a little footnote actually on the slide itself, so it's clear. Slide six is Budget Committee highlights. So Chairman Sun has asked, and rightfully so, as it's done in past years, he'll present actually the details of Article One in the few slides following, notably Articles, or Slide six and Slide seven. Just going through, these are lifts from the budget hearing and what's been presented at the budget hearing. And then Slide eight is major budget drivers as well, directly from a budget hearing. And Slide nine is pretty much a duplicate.
Yeah, I'm going to delete it right now, then, if we're okay with that.
Yeah, it's really the same. I just wanted to make sure you were comfortable with deleting it, and there were no other messages that you were trying to achieve with this slide.
Nope. I wasn't aware that the Budget Committee Chair was going to add that stuff, so I wanted to make sure we included that. So that's all this is. So I'm going to delete it right now.
Okay.
There we go.
Thank you. So now the new Slide nine. We felt it was important to include a comparison. There's obviously a lot of discussion on tax rate impact with the budget being an increase and a higher dollar amount than typical. And so the operating budget, as is projected right now, would be $16.05, and the default budget calculation would be $15.81. And so the thought here was to add a comparison about how that compares to the current year tax rate. The current year tax rate is $15.47. So just by comparison, so $15.47 to $16.05 represents a 3.67% increase, and the default budget of $15.81 would be a 2.15% increase just looking at tax rate. Obviously, as we know, things can change a bit between when this new tax rate actually is set in the fall, but that's how we're predicting it right now. So the idea here is adding a column to the right, right, with the current year tax rate, just for comparison purposes.
Yep. I can do that. Just, sorry. I apologize.
No, that's all right. So do we like that idea?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah? Okay. So this might be a little back and forth and choppy, but I can stand up next to JD and just take the next two slides, right? So Article One will be just kind of going through this slide. Article, or Slide 10 now will be the revenue to offset tax comparison. So again, just a comparison of special education, fund balance, and kind of walking through the reasoning for some of the money that we've returned and the differences. So Heidi, I see a thought from you.
Yeah, and then they added the column.
I added that.
Yeah. So I just thought it should be spelled out. There's a potential that people aren't going to necessarily be at the deliberative to hear the explanation, but they may see the slides, and so to have it spelled out very clearly that our revenue is expected to be that significantly less next year
Yep.
is a major driver. You know, I know we talk about it, but it's just number for people to see.
Yeah. I think when we talk about this, this isn't all of the revenue. I think this is just the ones that is critical for this point.
Yeah, right.
Do you think, I mean, obviously, you're the one presenting this, right?
Yeah, and so the way this whole presentation is shucked up, obviously, we have nine articles, right? And so the idea is, in past years, is each member takes one or a couple of the articles.
I think it's really important when, to highlight the fact that the $200,000, $200,000 fund balance, and like, how that's a real shift in the way that we've been budgeting.
Yes. In the past several years, it's been significantly higher than that.
Right.
Yep.
I know there was just a question from a community member about that over email this week, so.
Maybe we just have it as a comment over the past three years.
Yep.
How much we've been returning over the last three years. Just have that ready to go.
But I don't think people understand that that's something that factors into our budget, though. You know what I mean?
Yeah, for sure. But we've always planned on 200,000 as a budgeted revenue number. In reality, this is what we've returned over the past few years.
Oh, okay. So we had been budgeting that?
Yes.
You do, yeah. Because that's kind of like the typical amount, but it has not been 200, actually, haven't you?
Well above that.
Right. So for 24, the final is 640,000.
Yeah.
Yeah. Actually, it was higher than that, wasn't it?
Plus the land.
Oh, plus the land.
The land, yes.
Moving into Article Two, this one made a ton of sense for Heidi to present, as well as the Article Three that goes along with it, if you're okay with that one.
I am fine with that. Matt, are you good with that? Because you were on the negotiating team, too.
Absolutely, yeah. I think one thing I was thinking about with that is it might be handy to have some comparison, not, maybe not like on a specific dollar for dollar, but like some comparisons of percentage-wise, how much lower than, you know, competitive
Other districts?
Yeah, because I think, one thing I think that's lost on people is that they just see it as, well, they're getting two raises, but they're not realizing how far below market we really were.
Right.
Yeah.
And one of the comments made at budget hearing was, and it was really impactful to me to hear it, was, yeah, there's 87 total positions, and this is Slide 13, is there are 87 total positions, and we talk about, you know, how it impacts our neighbors, and it's so, like, you're talking about raising taxes for, you know, our neighbors, and it's really high and all this stuff. But the statement made was, you know, 53 of these positions were something like, it was very close to that, are in fact your neighbors.
Right, like Litchfield residents.
Like Litchfield residents. And if you say no to this, you're actually impacting your neighbors, right?
Well, and beyond that, if we can't fill these positions, we don't really have the option to just shut the schools. So that just means we're going to be contracting out at much higher rates for as many things as we possibly can, so.
Right.
Is there, I think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it out loud anyway. Is there any option for a Budget Committee revote on this?
So.
Because it technically fails because it was 4-4-1.
Yes.
And I, again, I, they may stick with what their do, what their vote is, but I just
My intention is to call a revote. Unfortunately, at the budget hearing, there were members absent, and it wouldn't have been advantageous to call that at that time.
Yeah, right. I just, I really think it's important to have the support of the Budget Committee behind this warrant article.
And look, it could go either way.
It could. It may stay the same, but.
Can we explain that the one, there was one abstention because it affects them. It's a conflict, right?
Yeah.
In the past, he's gotten up and said that at deliberative. He said, you know, I'm the one who had to abstain because my wife is in the bargaining unit.
Yeah. Okay. I just, you know.
I agree.
A lot of times in the past, articles make it or break it based on a Budget Committee vote sometimes, and this is one that we really need to pass, because if we don't have a contract with our support staff, we are going to be in trouble.
Any changes to Slide 14, 15? It's pretty straightforward, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Slide 16, 17 are also very straightforward. No?
Well, with 14,
Yeah.
I do think it might be, it might be advantageous to have the data on how many positions we actually were able to fill as a result of the mid-cycle negotiation, because we did end up filling a lot of vacancies. So it did work.
Yeah, I was thinking about adding where we were at in the summer. I think it was 34 positions or something like that.
I think at the time.
I mean, obviously, things come off and on, right?
Yeah. I think just at the time that we, prior, we made the choice to open that negotiation because we were so short-staffed. So at that moment in time, we should look at what we had versus where we're at now.
Yeah, we can make that note, so. I'll add that.
All right. I just put it in the footer, too.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Going into Slide 18, a part-time athletic trainer. Again, this is all up for whoever wants to divide and conquer here. Tina, you know, I don't know if you're up for this one, or if you want to give it to somebody else.
If anybody else wants it, I'm fine with that, but I'm okay doing it, too.
Does anyone have a strong passion for this one?
I mean, again, the value of Article Four is it actually saves the district money in the long run, right? And the other speaking note here is we have money in the budget for it, and that will absolutely be returned to the taxpayers should this pass.
And then in future budgets, we won't need to include that in the budget.
Correct.
And that's a return back to the.
Right. Okay. You all have access to the slides, too, so if there's any, you know, comments you want to add to it, please feel free to do so. Article Five, this is the Building Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund, very similar to past years, right? So Tina, just while you were up at the mic, made it kind of just logical to keep with you on this one as well, if you're okay with it.
Yep. This one does have, this is the one with the tax impact, so.
And that's a change this year.
Yeah.
Right? And as we look to build up that account and starting to raise and appropriate here, again, with the thought that we already have 300,000 in that account, that'll bring us to 500,000 for this first year, raising and appropriating the 250,000 on that. And then next year, when we raise and appropriate hopefully 500,000, it actually only feels like a $250,000 tax impact.
Yep. I mean, in Article, this is a couple of slides down, but this is Slide 24. This is a hypothetical. I didn't use the 500,000. I kind of split the difference with like a 325, just because that will get us to that roof amount down the road, which is what I think is important to show. We have a project in mind for this, the roof HVAC and fire system at Campbell. And then this is how it projects out, like, what we're trying to do. So.
So on.
But we can change that. If you want to, like, put 500 in there, we can. You know, if you want to stick with this, this is an example.
Think that's going to create sticker shock, though, in the first?
Yeah, I wouldn't raise that number for illustrative purposes.
My, the point was to get to the roof number. Like, that's what I wanted to do, an appropriate amount.
I do think it's also worth just pointing out that by doing this, over time, this will help to stabilize the tax impact.
Yes.
Because people need to understand that the alternative is, in '30 or '31, we would be bonding something that would just drastically jump the tax impact. And so it's, the goal is to try to level that out.
What, you know, I attended the town deliberative over the weekend, and what a theme that came out is just, the similar theme with the police department as there is to GMS, which is how much we, I don't want to say don't take care of our buildings, but how little we have put aside for maintenance for our town buildings. And then it just follows us, and we kick the can down the road, and then here we are with these very large problems to deal with, rather than tackling it a little bit at a time. And so even on the town side, you know, putting a little bits away at a time was the theme.
I do think it's also, I mean, I don't know if anyone asked the question, but I do think it's also important to understand that $2.5 million is just the roof. Like, we have a lot of other things, so there will be the potential that this will not completely alleviate the need to bond stuff. I don't foresee us being able to put enough money away to avoid bonding, but if we start these good practices now, then at some point, the town will be in much, or this district will be in much better shape.
I think you've got to save the bond for Griffin, whatever the solution is for Griffin. That's going to have to be bonded, because it's going to be massive.
Of course.
Can I just ask about the numbers on Slide 23?
Yes.
You have the 2030 estimate and the 2031 estimate. Is that the projected cost of the roof HVAC and fire detection system if we wait and do them in those years?
Yes, assuming 3% increase on each of those years, right?
That's from the onsite insight, right?
Yeah, it's from onsite insight.
Do you want to write a source on there?
Yeah, so it's not us just making up those numbers.
Yep.
Actually, you have it. It's up top, right?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Maybe a page number.
Yeah, and I would anticipate public comment on this one.
Yep.
I mean, we can bring, I won't make a billion copies of it, but we have some hard copies of the Onsite Insight Report in the office that we can just bring to the deliberative, too, if people want to flip through it or see whatever. I mean, it's posted on the website. Like, it's out there.
Right.
Why don't we add that, or just the URL to this? So if people want it, they can take a picture.
Definitely.
Yeah. And that's just one of the projects that's
Just one.
that's outlined for 2026, too. I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't approach anything at GMS that we might need.
Correct. GMS is kind of over here because it's so massive, what you've got to do. We're CHS. We still have the opportunity to kind of chip away at things there. And what we still have to do from a district standpoint, I mean, this will be lovely to have next March, is like, an actual, like, take that Onsite Insight Reports, transfer that to like our own capital needs that we show out, show with the CIP Committee, everything like that, details it all up.
All right. Anything else on Article Five? All right, let's jump to Slide 25, Article Six. Article Six, Matt, I have you.
I'm with me.
Tim will be tagged to this one. This is the Employee Benefits Reserve Fund. Again, fairly straightforward. This account makes a tremendous amount of sense, and is low dollars this year, which is great.
Were transferring that money based off of people that are putting in for retirement, or people are just, have become eligible?
Known people who are putting in for retirement, and what's in the account right now is people who have put in retirement, but necessarily, not necessarily have taken retirement.
So we, when we say two employees eligible to retire, we may have more that are eligible but haven't put in, right?
Correct.
So it really should be.
Correct.
It really should be.
When do they have to notify?
They have to put in her.
They have to one, I think.
Right.
So right now, there's nobody who's put in for retirement at the end of the school year?
Correct.
No, I understand, but this is just saying that two employees were eligible. It's not a question of eligibility. It's a question of people that actually put in for retirement. They obviously have to be eligible.
Some people who are eligible, right?
May not put in.
Right. They put in, and then they just might change their minds.
Right.
Put in every year.
And they put it in as an option.
Correct. Yeah. So that's what it is right now. We have people who have put in because they've put in for a couple of years in a row, and we'll decide in the spring if they're going to retire, and that, so.
So last year, we did like 178,000 or something in there?
I think there were six people that you were accounting for with that amount. Four of the six retired, so that's why there was so much that kind of went out the door with that.
Cool. Okay, and then, Matt, again, while you're up at the mic, I had you tagged to Article Seven as well. Again, Article Seven's all about special education. This one's also coming from unassigned fund balance, and how we're trying to build this up to 200,000. Now, we haven't made a draw from the Special Education Fund yet. I don't know if you want to talk about the high probability that we may.
Yeah, I think we are.
I think it's in there.
Yeah.
Access this this year on 31.
They have to access.
Oh, that, was that recently added? I don't know if I saw that, so.
Yeah, it's in there. I think we are going to have to access it. We're, long story short, we had a move-in last week, and we're doing the numbers, doing the math, and we might come back next meeting.
What's the likelihood? Just, you know, is, rather than may have to access it, if it's a strong possi, you know, a strong probability?
Yeah.
We should probably, can we change the language to make it reflect that?
We will be accessing it in the next few weeks.
Yeah.
With that additional move-in, I mean, I know we'll cover that at some point, but with that additional move-in, are we going to have to access the full amount, you think?
I don't believe so.
Because we were thinking we were going to have to access it before we had this latest move-in, right?
Correct, but not to get into all the specifics in public.
Yeah, draw me a clue or something.
We won't.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all I needed.
Yeah.
Oh, we will have a hearing, right?
Yeah.
All right. Article Eight, Capital Improvement Expendable Trust. Peter, I have you tagged to this one. Sharing the love. Again, this one makes a lot of sense. This one was not recommended by the Budget Committee, though. This is just continuing to add money to the Capital Improvement Expendable Trust, which is for cost of new construction or renovation of existing facilities, and building up that account a bit. Slide 34 talks to the balance. We have $316,900 in that account currently, and what the purpose of that fund is, offset costs related to GMS.
Just like a super small note, but just for transparency's sake, I think the current balance didn't include the January balances. If we have those by Saturday, these might be slightly updated with the interest that we got.
We just received them yesterday.
Perfect. So we will update them with the January ones.
Any thoughts on that one, Peter?
Nope. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. And then I'll go back to Article Nine, my passion of solar. I've certainly learned a lot about solar over the past year or so, and, you know, I'll talk about it, you know, actually, Heidi, echoing your comments about starting to build up small amounts to offset costs in the future. That's exactly how we're thinking about Article Nine, and thinking about not only the purchase after year six, but also the maintenance of the array, and how there's 880 panels on the roof, and there's lots of points of failure in communications equipment that goes along with this array, and how we need to be thinking about the upkeep and maintenance to make sure the system is operational and it's at its max efficiency at all times, to keep this thing, making sure that it's plugged in and efficient, and doing the return to the taxpayers that we expected to do.
So there's a couple of notes on Slide 38 that, to add some info, that we'll add to that, what it looks like after six, 10, 25 years, and then some of the cost savings that we're currently, both we're currently doing, and we anticipate with being able to purchase this and stuff.
Yeah, and Tina, I think to your point, right, if we were not to pay it out after year six, and if you were at up year 70, year 25, I think your question is, what's that cost, right?
Right.
That cost is over $3 million.
Right.
Right? And I think that's the number we just want to add. I have that. I can add.
Yeah.
Right? So it's over $3 million, or you pay it off for 600,000.
Right.
Do you think we should just put a note in here as to when the PPA went into effect? Because there's, I don't think, I think many people do not understand that we've been receiving the benefit from the PPA.
January of '23.
Yeah, I got it in here.
Was that, well, that was the date that it was approved.
Signed.
But was that, is that the date that they actually, like, turned on, like, you know, turned on the cost savings? Right? Because that's, is that the point at which we went to the 90,000?
That's a good question. I don't know.
I just think it's worth.
People left to the agreement. I mean, that's the date the contract was signed.
I just think that it's helpful. We need to be, people, people think that because the solar panels are not working, that we just aren't receiving the benefit.
You definitely had the savings
Yeah.
last year, '23, '24 school year, all year, because I remember we were processing that this summer.
So that would make sense.
So it was at least last year, and then maybe, that might be a good reference, how much.
I think it was last year, early, though.
So despite the fact that they're not up, we have, we have, you know, the PPA in place and are receiving the benefit of it.
I do think that's important to put in, when we started to receive that benefit.
Yeah, so we don't get, like, shot at.
I think we I think we received it effective the date of this contract, right? And I think we received, I think we received the benefit for the second half of '23 and all of '24.
Yeah, I don't recall.
But we can check. We got, I mean, just check the bills.
I think that's correct.
Yeah.
Because I don't think there was a time period where we didn't have the benefit. It was one of those conversations of when, when is it gonna get turned on versus when is the payment gonna, when does that, the clock start?
See, and I kind of thought it was, there had been some delays and that was a give from them at some point.
But I do think maybe on slide 37, it would make sense to actually specifically put a, it may make sense to put a bullet that just acknowledges that so people can see.
Everly for a board meeting with them.
Look at the solar contract.
So how do we like that flow? Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
I think so.
Okay. Just as a reminder for everybody, deliberative is this Saturday, February 8th at 10:00 PM Campbell High School.
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM, excuse me.
I'll mark it.
10:00 AM Campbell High School.
10:00 PM.
Well, it's better than December 8th.
Right, right. Of course, it's the real time.
I was in a flu haze Sunday when I sent.
Fog.
Surprised that was the only mistake I made.
Cool. Well, thanks for all your feedback on that. Anything else on deliberative presentation? I've asked for 50 copies to be printed. Do we feel like that's okay?
Yeah. I mean, I think even with the police station, I don't think the town had, you can tell me, you were there too. Did you see, think 50 people were there?
Mostly town police.
There was mostly town police.
Yeah, maybe 30, 35.
And that's with a big ask on their radar, but you never know. Schools sometimes.
More. You definitely get more folks to the school.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll have it. And if we need to make more, if you make more, we're there, so.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Yeah. We'll probably, you know, do two or three per, like, slides per page and stuff, you know, just for simplicity.
That's fine.
Better than the eight that was on the town page. You couldn't read that at all.
Oh, I know, right?
Like, eight, six or eight pictures on each page.
Yeah. All right, we'll shift gears into the voter guide draft.
So we have a draft of the voter guide. This doesn't have to go to the printer for another week or two. So even if you just want to read it for now and share any of your thoughts, I know a couple of you have already, we can update it before we send to the printers. Look up the specific date, but it's, it's not yet. And obviously, we coordinate this with the town, so we're all sending it out together.
Okay, great. I have not looked at this yet.
I haven't either.
Okay. So we'll save comments until.
Yeah.
The board, I would ask everybody to review it.
The printer needs it by the 19th, so we have a little time. But we did article explanations. Some of it, if it's very similar to past years, we use very similar language to previous voter guides. Obviously, some are different, open to whatever. We're no, I have no strong feelings about any of this. If you want to add or delete any information, so.
Our next meeting is on the 19th, so just if I ask all board members to review it and just add in your comments, we won't have a chance to talk to the board again about this one.
Yeah. So that's the voter guide.
Okay, next up.
So school calendar. We don't have to do this quite yet. By policy, we don't have to approve it by March, but I just want to get ahead of it so we can get feedback and dialogue going. You know, we sent this to both the LEA, the LSSA, different administrative teams and everything like that. The first link here is just kind of an overview of some important information, general information about our school calendar. By contract, we have 178 instructional days because we measure by hours through the state, 186 professional days for staff. That includes typically, you know, four PD days in August, three for kickoff, and one for human resource training, November PD day, which is the conference day, voting day, a PD day in March for voting, and then two professional development days to be determined. This year, they were January 2nd and 3rd. It's important, we align with the Hudson School District for CTE. That's a, pretty much a state requirement at this point that you align with your CTE center as much as humanly possible. One thing we still need to determine is when you wanted to follow an evening, spring, spring conference dates. This past year, we did the Monday evening into the full conference day. That's heavy, going into a Monday evening into a Tuesday and then the rest of the work week. Maybe I'm just selfish and think that's heavy. I think these Wednesday night board meetings are tough. Come back for two days and not one. So maybe we can move that to a Thursday evening for our staff and stuff, but, you know, I just want to bounce that off of everybody, the board, the LEA, and teachers and everything like that. And then really, there's three versions. And what's the difference between these three versions is when we do these two additional kind of PD days. These are just options. If someone's got a better idea, I'm all ears, but this was trying to coordinate different thoughts and different ideas that we have to kind of summarize. The first version has these two PD days. One would be, and these are kind of traditional in different school districts, have these different days at different times, right? So it's just what your preference is as a, as a district. Version one kind of has the day that extends Columbus State Weekend for families. And so you do a PDD on the Friday. If we were to pursue this, you know, talking with Dr. Taylor, we would emphasize data for this type of professional development day because it's early in the year. Students are still fairly new to us, but we should be able to identify them. And I said that we, the teachers and everything, they're new kids. And then the second PD day would be to kind of bridge the two semesters. This could be similar to our teacher wellness day we did this year, a good mid-year check-in, vertical alignment time, review and assessments. Those are the type of things we could do with a PD day splitting the two semesters. That's, some districts do that, some don't. It's all different. Version two is kind of like the inverse of what we did this year. We closed the holiday break with two PD days. I think our staff liked that. I know it was more challenging for families because they had the kiddos at home for an extra two days. For example, my kid was back in school those days. But this is the flip. We have that kind of weird two-day week ahead of Christmas this year. I know some families travel, do different things leading into the holidays, so we could turn those into PD days, 22nd and the 23rd. And we'd have probably a similar structure to what we did this year for professional development. The third version has that kind of Columbus PD day. Again, trying to pick a natural day for professional development, not random, which makes sense with other districts. And, you know, we talk about student conferences or parent-teacher conferences, and we do that in the fall, a full day, and then an evening kind of event. We're doing the evening thing this year, but not like a accompanying full day. So this could be an idea if you literally wanted to mirror the two things, fall and spring, where you, the second PD day in the spring could be a conference day. There's pros and cons to all three of these versions. We don't have to decide this tonight. This is for you to review, think about, talk to people, you know, get feedback. Obviously, we talked to our staffs about it. You represent the community and the families and different thoughts and stuff like that. So these are three versions that we have and that's where we're at right now. So, questions?
I just have a curriculum question. So I know we had talked about trying to get more ability to analyze data right after testing. So I know, like, the Columbus Day thing gives one day. Are you thinking that, my understanding at le, is that it might take a little bit more involvement than what you can achieve in one day? Is that something that if we did not go with the Columbus Day thing, that you still feel like you'll be able to try to facilitate?
Yeah. I'm already gonna, I plan to have talks with principals about coming in to stop meetings more and doing data protocols. And I go in once a month anyway to meetings with grade-level teams and things of that nature. This year hasn't been heavily focused on data because it's, where are we at in our curriculum types of conversations?
Sure.
So data will also trickle into those monthly meetings as well. So data will start to shine very heavy, but having a whole day to really dig in right after our preliminary data, because that's after, like, for K-8, that's after I-Ready window closes, is helpful.
I think.
There's pro, like, Brian was saying, the cons to all of these, and we talked extensively about there could be, in each iteration, there's.
There's value. You could find.
There's things that we can do that aren't just, like, random.
Sure.
One-off, like.
I think one of the things we kicked around, but we didn't commit to here for a couple of different reasons. One, it might be something we have to do from a contractual negotiation standpoint, is the idea of half PD days, you know? A lot of districts do that. They might do an early release into a half PD day, something like that. There's a lot to solve to do that. There's a lot of benefit. And one is the timeliness of data review, you know? But it's a commitment from the community because childcare, you know, like Wyndham, my home district does that. So, you know, we're fortunate that my kid goes to Y daycare, so it's not an issue, but that's new this year. Prior to this year, it was a real issue for us. You know, someone would have to take a half day of work and go home. I mean, it was valuable for the school, but it can be tough on families. So we didn't commit to that here, but it's definitely an idea that I think a lot of us like and want to workshop some more. And then when we look at the contractual language, it's pretty defined on what the PD days are, so we thought maybe we were kind of maybe testing the limits if we tried to push that. And maybe it's better to have that conversation as we go through negotiations next fall and stuff like that, so. But that is an idea out there that I think in future years might be worthy of a discussion, so.
And those will be all laid out at the beginning of the year, so.
Yeah. They're like quarterly. That's what Wyndham does.
Be clear on what that work was. There's lots of benefits to that.
Well, now that I know that you can still achieve the data thing, I know we're not voting on this right now, but I, I heard a lot of positive feedback about the way we did it this year, so that would be my.
With the two around holiday break.
Is there one way or another that the LEA or LSSA were leaning out of the versions?
I mean, they kind of gave me two different answers, like opposite answers.
Okay. Then that's, I mean, they may not align. That's fine.
Not like hardcore, but just like reading through their feedback. It was just curious. You know, they kind of contradicted each other and, not in like a bad way, just like.
Different points of view.
Different points of view.
Different perspectives.
I think LEA really wants me to start the school year later, like, after, after Labor Day, or at least there are some people who express that. But we're locked into the Hudson kind of calendar. We're kind of a school board meeting behind them in their school calendar. Like, they presented their first review at their last meeting.
Yeah.
Two weeks ago that had that, that August start date, so we kind of got to kind of fall in line with them, unfortunately, or fortunately, however your viewpoint is on that. And I think that, you know, the LEA, I think there are some people who are interested in this half-PD day type model, too. Like, so that's why I think maybe it's something we can have a longer discussion about, you know, next fall and stuff like that. And we have some teachers here, not to put them on the spot, but I don't know what their preferences are. I think it's just who, you have personal preferences on what it is, you know? My personal thing, like, if I was teaching as a high school math teacher, is version one. That's why it's version one, because it's my personal preference.
Wow, okay.
But that's a very selfish high school teacher of me to, like, have that, right? I think, you know, Sarah and our LEA reps and the whole team who plan their two holiday, like, PD days around the holiday this year did an incredible job and it was super beneficial to our staff. So I could definitely, like, hop on board with version two. I'll be honest, when I first saw that on the calendar, I thought, like, this is gonna be a nightmare. But the team did a great job of planning that and, and everything. And then, you know, as we've kind of worked through this parent-teacher conference stuff this year and what that will look like for the spring, it's just like, well, why don't we do it for the spring, right? Like, why don't we mirror the two of it? So just throw in that kind of idea out there, so.
So are we having, do we, are we taking a day this year for spring conference?
Not an evening, just.
Just an evening, okay.
Yep.
You know, it'll be interesting to see how many parents sign up for those conferences. I think you might be able to get some good data from that because there may be, you know, for, for GMS, I think parents might like the check-in, you know, in the middle of the year. For LMS and CHS, you know, if they don't have year-round classes, you have the opportunity to check into those semester classes. But I can tell you, for my kiddos, most of the core classes do run year-round, so I'll, I'm curious which parents, if parents sign up for it or not.
I would not imagine attendance is as strong as the fall.
I would agree.
Right. Across the board at all three schools. Just because people are familiar with their teachers, they'll reach out when they have questions, you know?
Right, exactly.
Teachers will reach out, will reach out to families when they have questions. But it was just a thought exercise that, well, we do this in the fall.
Something to explore.
Why don't we do it in the spring, you know, so.
Peter, any thoughts?
I guess if I was the, the teacher or even a parent, I would do the number two.
The number two.
To extend the Christmas break.
My view is number three was the best. Naturally, right? It's just how this works. And here's why. Like, number two, my, my reaction on that, coming back from this past year, was having two weeks off in December, while great for the kids, was not optimal for parents because it's a long time with the kids home, right? And, well, it just is.
That. I loved having two weeks at home with my kid.
It's a lot. But, I mean, we're having to work, too, right?
Yeah.
That, that was the struggle from at least the network I'm with. Also, like, the number three option, the value, looking at January, is they have three days off, not four, right? And taking that January 26 date and shifting it to a little bit later in the year was beneficial, just from a parent work perspective.
Yeah. I mean, the thing with three, while I've listed conferences here, there's no reason why it has to be, right? Like, we can easily transition that to an actual professional development day, right? Yeah, so like, while that's kind of the placeholder here in this, but like, if we have that this spring, we see the numbers are not going to be, you know, supporting, dedicating a whole day, we can easily shift that to an actual professional development day if that was the model we want to use. Hudson's is weird where they, like, they have one of their random PD days on like a Thursday. I don't think I brought theirs with me, but on like a random Thursday and stuff, which.
Yeah. There was, I do recall, and Tina, you'll remember better than I was because you were on the board, there was a conscious decision to get away from the half-day PD days because it was difficult for parents with early releases or delayed starts and the planning and.
And they weren't as effective, you know? By the time you get people in, you know, but.
Now, if, if we do not do version two here, because that involves, you know, those December days, what is, so it's in version one and three here, is December 23 is an early release day going into the holiday break to allow that travel. I know a lot of families, this was typical, this was true when my family was younger, we would travel that evening to get to wherever we were going for Christmas and stuff. So the 23rd is listed as an early release day. That's pretty typical of that 23rd day when you have it, when you run it in the school year. But we could run a full gig, but I would advocate for an early release day on that particular day.
I'm not saying I'm advocating for this, but is there a reason why the 2nd is a day off, February, or January 2nd?
Because it's the Friday after.
They'd be coming back for one day.
They'd be coming back for a single day on a Friday. So the same way that the Monday was off this year.
You really want a break from your kids on both sides.
No, I'm just asking, right? Because that.
Yeah, because you're only coming back, that is why. Because you're coming back for one day.
I'm asking the hard questions, okay? I know I'm not gaining any popularity here.
Because I think, like, just the reality of your attendance is gonna be.
Yeah.
For one day.
Just asking. Okay.
That's a good question.
No, I think, hey, you know, this is a very good topic for our families to weigh in on. If you have a preference, I, what I'm hearing is there, there isn't a lot of flexibility on the start date. We have to follow Hudson and that's with the CTE schedule. So a lot of times, we'll get the start after Labor Day, we want you to start, I mean, it's six to one, half dozen of the other, we're gonna get, someone's not gonna be happy. But in terms of where the days off during the year fall, I would be curious to hear, you know, what parents think.
All right. So these are all public facing, right?
These are all public facing. I was gonna send it out in one of my messages, too, just like, here's different options. If you have feedback, reach out.
All right. So on that, if anybody's watching, I don't know if any viewership tonight or not, but if we do, we'd love your opinions on options one, two, or three, or other. If you have other ideas on potential options for school calendars for next year, we'd love to hear it. Sounds like the superintendent will include it in his weekly emails on Sunday as well, so you have direct links there if you're not able to find it in the agenda. Again, please feel free to email the board. We want to hear from you.
Can I, can I ask? I mean, is it worth putting a Google survey, just, or a, a Google form out with the three options and let people just click one, two, or three, or other, and here's what I propose, to gather some feedback? It might be easier than, some parents may not email and.
Yeah, I, I don't mind doing that. I just want to be transparent that we may not, just because something wins.
Absolutely. No, no, no. This is to gather feedback. I don't even think we need to share the data necessarily. It wouldn't necessarily be to be shared. It's for your information.
Yeah, no, I don't mind doing that, but just, I just want people to know, like, if this one ekes it out by one vote, that doesn't necessarily mean that's the one we're going with.
Or if it ekes it out by 1,000 votes, you still.
That might, well, that would be something I would seriously consider, right?
I just want, it's in your discretion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's contractual stuff.
All right, well, more to come at a future board meeting soon on this one.
It'll be back next, next meeting, so the the next, um, it's just school board calendar, it a lot, it just follows up. Just so when, once we set the school calendar, we'll follow it up with the school board calendar for our meetings. We're trying to get ahead of, you know, various things of blocking out deliberative Saturdays, so there's no other school events on those days or anything like that. Um, and uh just some different budget sessions and meetings and everything like that, so this is still a work in progress. I don't expect um us to finalize anything, because we need the actual school calendar first, but just while we're on the subject of calendars, here's the school board one uh that we're chipping away with as well, so, there you go.
Any option to go down to one blue a month?
There are certainly districts that do one blue a month.
Am I gaining votes again? All right, all right.
All right, uh, next up, this is more informational, New Hampshire Labor Board Audit, we got an email from them last week. Hampshire Labor Board is coming to pay us a visit, they were supposed to come tomorrow, but they're not because of the weather. Um, so they're coming around to all the different schools in the state gradually, and our school districts in the state, and we're up. And what they're coming to do is to uh do an inspection on how we're following labor laws, make sure we're having joint loss uh management meetings, make sure we're following uh safety plans and all sorts of other stuff. Um, so we're going to be meeting, like I said, it's supposed to be uh tomorrow, but it's now pushed to Tuesday. So what that means for you as a board is we might be back at a future board meeting with updates to all of our safety stuff based on suggestions that they have and everything, so. If you see that, maybe as early as our next board meeting, uh that's why, because they're coming in to look at our stuff and to give us um some suggestions and how to improve, so. We'll see how that goes, but just want to make that informative, so when you see updates, it's not out of left field, so.
Not to start a lengthy discussion on this at all, but do you have any concerns about them coming in with Griffin?
No, well, that's a great question, I don't know. Um, we did the facility, so this is related, not related, so the if you remember me in the fall, talk about the facility, the state coming in doing the facility uh um to operate, allow you to operate. They came in and they say we can operate the building, so um I don't ultimately, I think that they'll say like you can continue to run school in that building or whatever, um but I'm curious what they will say, you know, about it all, because, yeah, there's work that needs to be done in that building, so.
All right, fundraisers.
Fundraisers, so um it might be actually more helpful to click on the policy first, so the student fundraising activity. We updated this policy a couple of meetings ago, and within that, there is language, it's not necessarily new language, but there's language in that that said all fundraising activities not included on the above list must receive initial approval from the school board. Um, and after initial approval, recurring fundraising activities only need approval from the superintendent. So, we couldn't find anything anywhere that said what fundraisers were and were not approved, so let's just start fresh. So we sent out to all of our teachers and our staff, hey, can you send us in the fundraisers, we've done overtime here. So what's that, that's that first link, um it's a spreadsheet with all of uh current fundraisers that we are doing, uh please feel free to take kind of uh a a look at it, it's nothing that, nothing too controversial here, it's typical school stuff. And then the second link on number two is just categories um of types of fundraisers that we have currently been doing. So what I'm going to ask the board for tonight is to kind of do a a mass approval, unless there's something here you don't like on this list, of these fundraising categories, and then that will meet that policy kind of requirement that these have come to the board um and been approved, so if a group next week wants to do a fifty-fifty raffle um of some, they can, and we don't have to come to the board approval. And then moving forward, if we had a new style fundraiser, I have no idea what that would even consist of, but some, there will be new stuff as things come in and out of style. Um, we would come to the board and then get that approval, but otherwise be able to just kind of continue on with our, I just want to make sure we're following the policy as we have written it, so.
Presumably, if we got a new one, we would just add it to the list of approved.
Correct, correct, yep, yep.
I believe the Veterans Association does fundraising or i- or activities for all three schools, conscious LMS.
They do, yeah, this, I'm sure is not an exhaustive list, uh we sent it out a few times, and I just know that this is not an exhaustive list, so we'll continue to try and find more and more. But like those veterans.
You just want to still approve the bulleted list, though, right?
Correct, because then anything like the the Veterans Association does for the schools would fall under the categories, that kind of general list, because the policy reads, you only have to kind of approve the category and then anyone can kind of do it afterwards, if that makes sense.
So I'm looking, sorry.
Yeah, I'm looking at the spreadsheet.
I'm looking at the spreadsheet.
You can look at the spreadsheet to get more specific details.
It's a lot easier to look at the bulleted list, yeah, yeah.
Are these for student organizations or for, like, we have some parent organizations like PTO and.
Great question, this is just for student organizations, they're student doing. The PTOs and a booster club and um those type of organizations, I think Pops, just because Nate was filling it out, added some Pop stuff, but those are different, they don't have to follow that policy, they're private, not private, but they're they're independent organizations that have their own set of um rules they have to follow and stuff like that.
I'll make a motion to approve the listed fundraiser categories.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second additional discussion. Right, um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries five zero.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we'll turn it over to our business administrator for an update tonight. Give the superintendent a break from talking.
Uh, one thing I did want to mention is I did get confirmation from Ann um that the slight increase in the payroll is due to the um third payment of co-curricular stipends.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Um, I don't have any um transfers um this evening um over the threshold um to bring to you. I did have a joint loss committee, um I was going to just do a little bit of a rundown of that unless you wanted to cover that, Heidi, I wasn't sure.
Okay.
Um, so we did meet on the twenty-eighth of January um and reviewed our lost time reports and procedures. Um, we also, um Holly was talking about the um district safety program and student violence prevention and management plan. This is a plan that um I guess was put together a couple of years ago, but never got to full approval stage. This is actually one of the items that they're going to be looking at for the Department of Labor. Um, and from what we understand from the person that's coming from the Department of Labor, that it's going to be a very um includes, like, they're they're here to support and provide guidance, it's not so much, you know, to try to find what we're doing wrong. Um, so hopefully we'll get some more input, um and Holly actually met with um one of our Primex representatives today to get more input on that and guidance. Um, the other things that we talked about were just general building concerns, um certainly we discussed the um temperatures that in the buildings that were issues with LMS and GMS in particular. Um, right now, it seems that we have those under control, um but we're going to be diligent and continue to check on those daily. The other items that we discussed were um dividing responsibilities, because we do have to do required building inspections, so we're going to be talking about how we're going to divvy that up the next meeting so that we can start those as well. Power School, um I just wanted to update the board that we did sign an engagement letter with McDonald Hopkins. Um, and this was advised by Primex, um who provides our insurance. And um McDonald Hopkins is the firm that does the cybersecurity piece of the insurance. Um, and essentially what they're going to be helping us with is that they explained to us that because the data that was taken during the breach, even though it's on the Power School platform, it is our data, we're the owners of that. Um, so when there is a breach, um regardless of the fact that we were not responsible for how that information was taken, um we are responsible to make sure that every person is notified properly, and there are very specific regulations on how that notification happens. So this firm is basically going to assist us to make sure that Power School is doing the correct notifications, um so that we're covered in that way. I do have a copy of that contract if you'd like to see it as well. Um, the other thing that they advised us to do was to um provide a link on our website um for the notice of power school data security breach um that includes um an outline of um information of the, such as the things that Power School is going to be offering to individuals and how they can sign up for that, like the credit monitoring, um as well as other resources, so we have added that to our website.
I've sent that out a few times through just those weekend messages for people, if they're looking for it.
Um, one thing that was brought to my attention this morning um was um over at um Griffin, uh there was a bird that had gotten into the building yesterday, I believe, um. So, um.
Your pocomorid staff.
She's like Snow White.
That's right. So Dave Ross, our facilities director, went over to see who, you know, to find out how the bird got in. Um, and apparently there's an eve um that is over that part of the building that is deteriorated quite a bit. Um, I guess that there's, this same situation was happening in a different portion of the building about ten years ago, and it was addressed and properly taken care of, um and the problem that we have now is um essentially, we haven't taken care of the issue, so there is a hole on the side of that building that we had put mesh wiring in front of prior to try to keep out the critters um until we had a more permanent fix. And part of that west um wire mesh has come down because that the part of the building has deteriorated further with, you know, the constant weather and whatnot. Um, so Dave said that he believes that we had an estimate at like about two years ago to fix that properly when it would, it was going to cost about twenty-five thousand dollars. So at that time, because there was an anticipated new school um coming on the ballot, you know, that was the decision to just kind of make do with, try to cover it up as best we could. Um, but now, here we are again, trying to solve this issue. So Dave said that he could try to temporarily patch this area again, um but certainly it's concerning, I mean, it it does, it's not going to get better.
So under policy DJB, I ask that you, well, I'll make a motion, that you uh solicit a bid.
Okay.
To at least get a cost.
Yeah, that's what we were going to ask.
Yes.
Under the policy, and you have, the business administrator can can put out a request to get this repaired, and no board member needs to approve it, because given it's a major repair, so.
So do we even need a motion that time?
We don't, under the policy, but.
I mean, the motion you just made, do we even need that motion?
Well, I mean.
It's just a directive of the board.
It's the directive of the board, what do you think?
My only question is, I mean, this is the age-old problem with this school, right, it's like, how much money do you.
But we can't wait another two years.
No, 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 I agree, I agree, yeah, I agree with that, but my question, I I'm curious to know how much how much of this would be duplicative if we, because we have like major roof issues too, so like, are we at the point where we have to just bite the bullet and say, well, we're going to do the roof on the school?
And that's what, no, I don't think we can afford that.
Well, we can't.
Or do we bite the bullet and say, we got to move classes out of that wing because this keeps happening and.
And where do we put them?
In the thirties, probably.
Portables. Do we start looking at quotes for portables?
Not really.
No, I agree, I agree with you, we just get a quote too.
My thought, as you were talking, right, is are we opening Pandora's box?
Always.
Always, yes.
Any issue with GMS's opening Pandora's box?
That was my question about the roof, right?
Well, we can't not fix it, I mean.
No, we have to fix it.
I know.
I mean, I literally wrote, by the way, in my joint loss notes from the meeting, when someone said, are there any building concerns? All of GMS, kidding, not kidding.
The state's coming in.
But yeah, I mean, kidding, not kidding, it it, there are some really serious concerns over there right now, um, we can't have birds.
So here's my motion, um, I am going to make a motion. I'll make a motion for the business administrator to follow policy DJB and to do what's necessary to investigate and potentially repair the issue at GMS as reported.
All right, we'll second it.
Additional discussion?
I just would like an update on what we find out and if there are other things that we need to be looking into for additional concerns.
And keep the board apprised of that.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, if this turns into significant, uh, make us work. All right, we have a motion, a second, and additional discussion was held, I'll call the vote, um all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, five zero.
Can I ask the outcome of the bird?
That's a good question, I don't know.
Did the bird live, did it fly away? Okay, excellent, all right.
We believe it, it found a naturalized it.
Okay, okay, good.
Believe.
Or we'll find out.
Or you'll start to smell something soon.
Can I just like put a, one, like, at least this isn't happening, did anyone catch the news like about a month or two ago about Newport?
No, well, the Thillen just had one too.
The bats, yeah, there was like a thousand bats in like the elementary school in Newport. So these are not bats.
Not that many, no, it was like.
These are not bats.
You can't, you can only remove bats at a certain time of year, too.
I know, that's the problem, they have to just now leave them there.
They have to leave them there until.
They just stop using the school, didn't they?
For like a week, and then they had to patch it up, and then later on.
Um, I have made an error. Um, when I entered the warrants and into the DRE portal, um I made an error in some of the language. Um, there was three articles, and I'm extremely sorry, um that I left out some of the wording. One of them was the up to instead of the sum of, um for two of the articles. And then for the employee benefits one, there was um a portion that I left out that was um describing exactly which benefits. So I called um Gordon Graham today, our attorney, who's going to be representing, I said deliberative, he says that um it's not, I understand it's a big deal, but he said it's it's something that we can rectify by um asking the moderator on Saturday if we can give him the amended version, because the versions that we agreed to are the ones that obviously we need to be on the warrant article, so the important part is those were the ones that were voted on. Um, so he said we can ask the moderator if he feels comfortable just reading them as amended, or if he would like to read the original and then the amended.
Okay, so will you be asking the moderator to do so?
Yes.
Okay, all right, and will you give him a heads up prior that that's coming his way?
I can, I I asked the attorney if I should do that, and he said, no, we can just do it on Saturday, but I don't.
Yeah, I think you should still.
Okay, I will do that.
I would give him just a heads up that this is coming his way.
That's Scott Perry.
It's Steve Perry, sorry. Yeah, and if you need his phone number, I'd be glad to share it with you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Steve Perry.
Yes.
No relation.
From Jurn.
English teacher named Steve Perry, way back.
I think it's a different Steve.
It's my favorite teacher.
Any other updates? Um, one update or one question I have for you is on the transfers, um I know you had mentioned there's no transfers, but a question for you is one of the questions that I think Mr. Glansky had and I had, is on the advanced presentation systems expense of thirty-one thousand nine hundred dollars or so.
Yes.
I understand that that's covering the costs of the three or the smart boards and projectors, but that's covering costs for one of the buildings, so are we transferring what's budgeted across the other two schools to that one line at one school?
So we, I asked Christian Amrod, our IT director, how that goes, and he said that basically he purchases as many smart boards as he can at the beginning of the year, knowing that we're going to place them where we need to place them. Um, so he, he did say that we, there was money that was in the LMS, um, let me see. There was money in the LMS um line for lab replacement of uh for twenty-two thousand five hundred. Um, but the lab was actually in good shape, so that's why he decided to take more of the money from the LMS project. I I certainly understand your concern about wanting to transfer the money to the correct line, but he essentially said we're taking the money um for the last three years, he's taking the money out of all those three lines and then just placing the um the units where they need to go, so first he focused, he was going to just, the initial idea was to do um, you know, give each school what they need every year, but three years ago when they were doing the um construction at LMS, it wasn't like that he wasn't able to replace any of the projectors as he had planned to. So instead of letting that money go to waste, he decided to start doing the smart board installations. Um, and so since then, it became, so LMS was the first year, GMS was last year, and this year they were doing CHS.
Again, I think this is where we need to be tighter in budgeting.
I understand that.
And like, we should be doing it properly and doing transfers between accounts.
Agreed.
Right, and that's, that's where.
Agreed.
I have an issue with it.
Yeah.
I don't have an issue with the methodology, I have an issue with how we're accounting for it.
Right.
I understand.
Yeah, and I think if that's what the board would like us to do, we need to make those transfers, so it's represented in the like final documents and stuff. I think with like, just, I'm not defending, just like stating, um, you know, with this, where it's Chris is kind of the overseer of those lines, he's, I don't think as concerned with the transfer, because he's the one who's spending that money, right? Where if it was a supply line at GMS and a supply line at LMS. Where if it was a supply line at GMS and a supply line at LMS, Dan's spending the supply line at GMS, and then Jen's obviously supplying it at LMS, there would be a conflict if someone's taking money from those different things. But I do agree, it's it's good practice to make sure we're actually representing the transfer.
Yeah.
Um, place like this is typical business, something's not needed, you have to budget so far in advance. Time arrives, you're gonna put it to a slightly different thing, but same general idea. Perfect example like this, it's still smart boards, it's just focusing on one school instead of all three, so, yep.
Okay, thank you for that. Alright, uh, moving over to Dr. Taylor for curriculum.
Dr. Taylor, you need me to project any of this?
Um, maybe the curriculum review.
Sounds good.
Um, but first we'll start with, um, after the um board approved the courses that came forward, um, there were some additional discussion on the Spanish courses, and a request was made to do some tweaking of those proposals. And um we did take, bring them back to the committee for review. And after some email discussion and some rationale, um, there were lots of good reasons to bring this forward as options for students for next year. Um, especially because they changed their proposal of the conversational Spanish to be from one year to a half a year and a semester course. I apologize, the link in there is not the updated proposal, but the committee did have the updated proposal and agreed to the half a semester long um course, conversational Spanish. It gives um seniors an option to continue to pursue some language, but also there has been feedback um from current seniors and juniors going into their senior year that committing to a full year of Spanish is a little bit trickier because they have other um senior perks that they want to enjoy and should. Um, so it kind of just opens and broadens some things for them. And then we don't currently offer a Spanish four honors course. We offer Spanish with an honors option. So right now, we have a big bubble of Spanish three um juniors that have expressed that it would be nice to have an option to take a full honors course, and it preps them better for AP. And we're not offering AP next year because we don't have enough room in the schedule with this bubble of students that they currently have. So it would, it, there's a myriad of different options. Um, so the committee all voted unanimously to bring it back to the board for reconsideration and to approve adding Spanish four honors and then the semester conversational Spanish four.
I guess I'm not understanding why, like, why there's not room in AP Spanish and why there would be for Spanish four.
So I don't have a teacher here with me right now, but um what, from the notes that I have from her is that they wouldn't be able to offer AP, that's what.
My understanding is there's no Spanish four.
If you're interested in AP, I'm trying to.
Yeah, she's not certified to teach AP.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, so I can jump in here, because this is high school. So we don't have Spanish four this year, is my understanding.
Um, you have one section.
Right, but there's not gonna be the kids next year because when we had, and I wasn't here, so, maybe you guys can help me out. But with this COVID bubble, Spanish got, didn't take it in middle school and they started year one in freshman year with Spanish one because of COVID, whatever the reason was there.
We couldn't find a Spanish teacher.
Yeah, so they're not gonna have the AP Spanish for that group now getting here. AP Spanish is essentially Spanish five. So in a perfect alignment, a kid would take Spanish one in the middle school, Spanish two freshman year, three sophomore year, four junior year, AP their senior year. That's what should be the kind of traditional buildup to Spanish. So this is the bubble that got caught up into COVID, and is not gonna actually get into AP Spanish because of the way that it aligned there and stuff, so.
Alright, so AP is equivalent to Spanish five?
Yeah, it's equivalent to Spanish five.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Some schools will run them separately, that's a whole other drama. But, you know, here, the natural thing is it's Spanish five, yes.
And um the Spanish, uh, or the world language teachers also said that by offering the half a year semester, they could, if a student really wanted to, take them concurrently, so they could take the conversational Spanish and a Spanish four honors um if they were really interested in pursuing the different types. So um we really felt like it was worth bringing back to the committee. And we've also, we're making some revisions for next year to our proposal process to avoid having to come back and forth and.
Do we have any bilingual students that speak Spanish native?
I'm sure we do.
That take these classes?
Um, well, I'm sure we do.
I used to have one of my classes, the name was Luis, he was pretty cool.
Alright.
Are they eligible for these classes?
Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Yeah, well, you remember, uh, we had.
We had Cara come and.
Yeah, we had Cara do the literacy, yeah, that, I can't even talk.
Yeah.
But that, and like, we don't often think of it with that flip, but for a kid who's maybe a native Spanish speaker, for example, they're gonna go through their Spanish classes pretty simply, right? It's their natural language, and it's the English that gets them the bilinguals.
So wouldn't like, wouldn't Spanish one be harder for them than Spanish four? Because Spanish four, you're going and you're speaking all Spanish.
Right, so like sometimes.
It can be actually still tricky for them because.
Right.
Um, the way, just like.
Just like English is for us, yeah.
You have grammatical things that, you know, that a lot of times they start, you speak in slang, you can't speak in slang.
It's like traditional, yeah. Proper, I don't know if it's proper, sorry.
All of that kind of.
So like the conversational Spanish is more everyday slang, language and stuff, not slang.
Alright, so are you looking for approval?
I am looking for approval for the semester um conversational Spanish and Spanish four honors.
If the board agrees?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve conversational Spanish for grammar and conversation as a semester course and Spanish for honors as a year-long course to be added into the program of studies.
There's a motion, second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Harrison, second by Mr. Plansky, additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, five zero.
Alright, thank you very much. Um, so uh the curriculum review committee has been very busy, and um we met um and talked about curriculum review phases that um have been in the past and what we'd like to see moving forward. And as we've um discussed in meetings previous earlier in the year, um, we've been really looking at Madison Public Schools, models of how they're doing some things. I met with um the curriculum director there over Google Meet, talked through some things. And uh one of the things that I really appreciated was the way that they do their curriculum review cycles. Because what I saw when we first came was a spreadsheet that was hard to follow on where we were at, and it was really more a program review. It wasn't a curriculum review. So um as a committee, we were, we wanted something a little more robust. So um I put this together, it is adopted from the Madison model, but it's a full curriculum cycle, a review cycle. It is not just, let's look at our math program, let's look at our ELA program. And, you know, it's really digging into instruction, assessment, data, all of the things. Um, so I'm just bringing this to the board for information. The um committee, it was funny, I put this together and I thought we would have a lot of conversation, but as people reviewed it, they were like, this is great. So um we really didn't um change too much. And what we're going to do from here is get some feedback on where people think their curriculums are at after reviewing the phases and then um come up with a game plan for what subjects are in what phase and um action steps going forward in really putting together a nice curriculum review cycle that is comprehensive. So we just wanted to show you guys this. Do you have any questions, comments?
This looks great. I really appreciate that you've gone out and tried to seek out what other people are doing to compare and contrast. Also, I think this gives you a nice six years of job security.
I mean. Right?
Any questions?
I need to take some time to familiarize myself a bit further with this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know we mentioned it way, way early, you're probably forgetting, but the Madison Public Schools out of Connecticut, where Sarah's, you know, working with them and getting all this information from, they're the model, Niask recommends and stuff. If you go through their curricular documents, that's what we're, we're aiming for, shooting for. They do a great job in the cycles, they put everything on it. Um, we mentioned a long time ago, but now we're getting into it, you might wanna revisit, you know, that stuff, so.
Have you seen how they, how they compare across Connecticut, like in terms of, you know, where they compare, like, testing-wise and stuff like that in Madison?
Um, I haven't dug that deep into it yet, uh, because I've been trying to keep up with.
Sure. Yeah, that was more.
But no, I haven't, um.
Good to know, love.
I just.
I think they're.
They're the last one, we're like, oh, shoot, we're copying the wrong people.
Right, exactly.
I think they're fairly.
I know, right?
They're fairly high.
No, they're.
I think, I think they're, I think it's a good, it's a good.
They are, and if they're the model, Niask go like, Niask has a like rigorous process, and they do look at all of those kinds of things.
I'm just always curious how things correlate to testing, right?
Yeah, and just as a curriculum person, when they're stuff, I'm like, this is solid. It's put together very well, and um there are, you know, tweaks and things that I'll do here. Like, I'm not gonna copy and paste.
No.
You know, but um the model in general, I was very impressed with. So, and especially this, because a lot of times you see a curriculum review cycle, and again, it just focuses on program, and that's not what curriculum instruction and assessment is. This is a whole.
Alright, this is great. Um, next up is Learning Outcomes Task Force.
Yes, so Learning Outcomes Task Force, formerly known as the Grading and Reporting um Committee, is, uh, we had our very first meeting last week, Lily is part of our committee.
And the bird, or no?
What?
And the bird, or no?
No, not the bird, the bird did not make an entrance, thank goodness. My, yeah, um, so. Nineteen members, one um was newly added today, actually, and it's a great variety of all three levels. Many different um areas, subject areas are covered, um, so it was.
You are in my, I think, secondary or your.
No, I know, I'm.
I have to add you to, I have to add you to the folder. Because I don't think I added you to the back correspondence yet.
I'll make sure to be at the next one.
I can, it's next week. Um, so we um, we met last week and we really went through, what do we want to do? So the goal is that we want to, at the end of each year, come out with a deliverable that's actionable for staff in the district. So it was a lot of roundabout conversation, right? Lily, like, what was our purpose, what are we doing? It was really great conversation, very productive, and um we ended with, let's look at assessment practices, and let's see where they're at in alignment with standards and um how they're generated, what types are being used, et cetera. So um a survey just went out to staff today to um answer um anonymously some questions, some various questions about assessment practices. And then the committee is convening again next week, and we're gonna look at those and we're gonna decide what kind of deliverable can we give to the staff in June based on these results that we're getting, based on what can we do to help? Is it something that is, here's formative and summative, here's more an explanation of what it is, here's a protocol on how we can align our um assessments with standards? So there's a lot of different things that we're gonna discuss um at next week's meeting, and I'm excited to get rolling and get some action steps.
What day is that meeting?
It's next Wednesday, the, nope, not next Wednesday.
Weekend, the week after?
The.
Okay, it's the week after.
Yep, it is the twelfth.
I was like, I don't see it on my calendar, but now.
It is next Wednesday, sorry.
No, it's the nineteenth, right?
It's the twelfth, the nineteenth is the review committee meeting.
I don't have anything on my, I don't have anything on my calendar for the twelfth, so you should add me to the.
I will add you right now.
Yeah, I didn't get the invite.
It's the only way I show up, thanks.
I got the, I got the emails, I didn't get the calendar reminder.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's supposed to be every other day.
Okay. Okay, your vote.
Thank you.
I'll get it sorted, who's on what.
Okay.
And then it'll be changed. Okay, um, any questions on that?
I think we just program, uh, agenda-wise, was just update the name of the agenda as well on the, to change grading and reporting committee to learning task force.
Hmm, yeah.
Yes, that committee has.
Yeah, it was a bad name, I guess, people don't like it.
I guess so. Um, alright, vertical alignment.
Okay, so um last week, we did the science um vertical alignment day on Thursday. It was an amazing day, actually Cheryl was there, part with us for that. Um, there, so as of now, math, social studies, ELA, and science have all participated in a day of vertical alignment, professional development. We've been amazing conversations that have shown a light on a lot of different things that, great things that are happening, and some things where we can work to improve. Um, I've made resource folders for each of those subject areas, and I shared it out in my curriculum newsletter um that went out to staff this last week. Those, that work is gonna continue as I go into curriculum um meetings in grade levels and departments so that we can continue our forward momentum. Um, and I'm currently working on a schedule to have those days with other subject areas like PE, health, computers, all the unified arts. That schedule is coming out, I'm gonna talk with admin at our SALT meeting tomorrow and start meeting with those groups, so. Lot, we're moving and grooving in CIA.
Love it.
Good thing.
Good update. Any other questions for curriculum?
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you for the update.
Appreciate it.
Alright, uh, rock and roll, and public minutes from January twenty-second. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve January twenty-second.
Alright, we have a motion by Mr. Shoemaker, second by Mr. Plansky, discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, that's five zero.
I think non-public's supposed to be in non-public.
It's not, because we're not going into non-public tonight.
Oh, okay.
I think a motion to approve the non-public minutes for January twenty-second.
Okay.
We have a motion by Mr. Plansky, Shoemaker, second by Mr. Plansky, just discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, that carries five zero. Uh, we have no new business to report tonight, and uh under old business, we have facilities.
Brian, can you pull up the matrix? Are you able to, it's in, it's in Drive?
Yes, give me a second.
You don't have to, we're gonna, we're gonna, I'll, I'll talk while you pull that. You don't have to, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna, I'll, I'll talk while you're pulling it in.
Sounds good.
No, and also none, 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 but it was, so.
Were you excited about going into that?
No.
First time in a long time.
Yeah?
So, uh, facilities, so we spent the last facilities meeting, uh, well, actually, wait, timeout, let me back up a second here. Uh, two meetings ago, I think, for, for school board, um, we brought up the conversation of the delayed, what is it called, Dan? Delayed entry bars for the doors.
Delayed egress.
Delayed egress, yeah, entry, delayed, delayed egress.
Delayed egress bars.
The FIC had taken a vote on, uh, whether to formally recommend that the school board investigate that, and the, the vote was in the affirmative. I apparently did not correctly convey that, and Mr. Oblenis wanted me to make sure that I did convey that, and asked the school board to take action on that. And if I recall from the minutes, there are nine?
Yes.
Yes, and I think, I mean, we had a very, not, not vetted cost, but-
Just a rough guess.
Do you want us to come up to the table? Please.
I, I did literally like a rough Google cost, like a, a Google search of the cost of the materials, and then did just the, like, the times two. But, um, a few weeks ago, um, our lock smith, our indoor contractor, was out doing some site work at GMS on one of the doors, so I asked him, um, to come up with a quote, so I'm gonna follow up with him next time he's here, but I'm hoping to get an actual, he took measurements of the door, so we can get actually a pretty close to, um, exact quote on, on what that would look like. And the delayed egress is basically just that, it, it's often used in like memory wards and things like that, where you push the bar, um, and it delays it fifteen, thirty, whatever seconds, so it could hopefully, if there are any, if there are any elopement issues, um, it would, it would give us some time to prevent those, but it's also tied into the fire and security system, as well as, um, the teacher or the staff ID badges, so they could swipe and bypass.
Like an electronic system of some sort?
Yeah, it, it looks just like a bar, like a, a push bar, but when you push it, if you don't have a bypass badge, you push it and it doesn't do anything. Think about like, when, if you're ever in a maternity ward, if you don't have the magic bracelet and you push the bar, you ain't going anywhere. So, it, it's kinda like that for the school, so that would hopefully buy us some time, especially with the doors that are, um, three A or, you know, Charles Bancroft facing or close to proximity.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, so we spent the, almost the entire last meeting looking at a matrix that was put together. So, the first, oh, you don't have the correct one, cause the correct one is-
This isn't the correct one, alright, let me go back.
Here, here.
Does this make sense?
Yes.
I may have mentioned it today when I looked at-
This'll make more sense to you in a minute, when you see, when you see, so, what we, of course, and I think I alluded to this last time we met, was that when you look at all the options, like, there is an ability to achieve, okay, so the first hundred and six or hundred and eight items were all things that were pulled from the onsite insight reports, and obviously, we can address any of those issues in any of the options. So ultimately, what we, uh, came to was the, uh, we came up with a list of like eighteen items that are more so based on, uh, the educational impacts, uh, the stuff that Dan presented um, to the FIC, and then we talked about whether those can, uh, do you need me to send it to you, cause I can, I have it open.
I'll find it. Oh, sure, if you want to send them, I'll probably-
GMS matrix draft.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's got the orange, huh? There, I got it, I got it.
Um, so, the things that you're gonna see in orange are the things that we added to the list to talk about, will each of these, do we think each of these options would address, uh, these items? And so, in two seconds, you're gonna see what this looks like. We, um, we, as a committee, we spent all of our time working on adding these items and saying the yes, no, maybe, so we did not have time to analyze this data, we are, that's our plan for next week. We're gonna actually sit down, analyze this, I think we're gonna also revisit the survey data, cause now we have two things to put together and start to hopefully make some recommendations. Um, but you'll see, just going down the list, uh, gymnasium redesign, like, does, you know, a repairs-only option, uh, just to kinda paint the picture for the board, repairs-only is considered repairing just what's at GMS, but I think we also, um, per Mr. Oblenis's clarification, we're including, that includes repairing the thirties building, uh, because the, uh, the onsite insight report did include, I think it was like a million dollars or something like that.
One point two million for that thirties building.
Two million to repair the thirties building. So, the, the repairs-only column is basically doing the things that the onsite insight report indicated that we should do. Uh, renovations would entail fixing those things, but also potentially moving things around, shifting, you know, spaces and whatnot, redesigning spaces, obviously renovating and renovations with additions, you understand, new building, you understand. Redistribution is the idea of moving grades, you know, seven, eight up to the high school potentially, and shifting around, um, third, fourth, whatever. So, anyways-
Can we have definitions added to this, maybe just on the bottom, so when we reference this in three years, we know what each of these columns actually means?
Yes, absolutely.
They're in the minutes.
Yeah, but no, it's, it'd be easy, it'd be easy to, it'd be easy to add those, yep. Um, so, you know, things like, would we accomplish a gymnasium redesign? Our gymnasium is not, doesn't meet regulations right now, it's, it's not wide enough, long enough, whatever. Um, you know, would we be able to achieve the restroom upgrades to hit current standards? You know, a lot of this is like accessibility stuff, um, and then other things that were related to ed, direct educational impact, so, um, support suite services, are we gonna get those things more centralized? Um, are we gonna have spaces for pull-out stuff? And then going on to like things, I mean, you can read it, I'm not gonna read each one to you, but, you know, readdressing traffic, or readdressing fire suppression. So you'll see, you know, when you, there's a lot, you know, obviously, you, with a new building, you can achieve all of those things because you can, it's, you're designing it to that. If, if you go all the way back to repairs-only, there's a lot of things we can achieve, and then there's a varying amount within renovations, renovations plus additions.
Yeah, and if you're considering repair, I consider these summer, some of these as way higher priority than others.
Right.
Right, and where, is that gonna be factored into this evaluation, is in terms of like, what's higher priority and what's not?
Like, if you say fire, fire suppression and repair, jeez, I'm viewing that as like really high priority versus, um, I think I saw office somewhere, right?
Yep, office redesign.
Yeah, like, to be, while important, that's lower priority than fire suppression. So I think, you know, one thing that's important about this is, if, if you go back to the survey results, and if we rely on the survey results, which we're gonna discuss at this next meeting, and how, you know, what should we give credit to? One thing that was abundantly clear was that people want to see a balance of educational needs and cost, right? So, we know that we have to give some deference to what are the educational needs, and if you look at the repairs-only option, I mean, just my, my analysis of it is, there's a lot of no's there. So, you know, do, do I think that that would ultimately be, uh, the solution that the board, or the FIC would put forward, or do I think that's ultimately gonna be what it is? I doubt it, but, you know, I have to look at the FIC, go through the process, but we have, we have the matrix now, we're gonna be doing some analysis in the next meeting, I should have some-
Just two, the, the, the first eighty-nine items are everything that's in the onsite insight report for the first five years.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, that's like a minimum, that's gotta get there.
Alright, that's helpful. So are you on, from a facilities committee, are you on track to make a recommendation to the board by when?
You told us March, and that's what we're gonna do.
When in March, first meeting or second meeting?
I would say the second, yes.
That makes sense, it's after elections and stuff, so.
Okay, just trying to get that date to work.
And listen, you told me I had to hit it, so we're gonna hit it.
Alright. Um, okay, excellent.
Actually, that's a good point, I may not, no, I'm just kidding. Nothing else.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Shoemaker on facilities?
We did do, just to add, we did do tours.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant, I wasn't able to attend those.
Yep, that's alright, yeah. Did tours, uh, in the evening last week, last Wednesday, Thursday, Tuesday, sometime last week, in the evenings, they blend together, uh, both LMS and CHS, and I thought that was productive for people who hadn't, weren't necessarily familiar with those buildings, to kinda see, not like classrooms, but the other stuff, you know, like boiler rooms and electrical panels and all that fun and stuff.
Because we've been discussing, one of the options was a move of seventh and eighth up to the high school, a lot of people hadn't seen those spaces, so, my understanding is they went much longer than you anticipated.
Yeah, I can usually do a tour in a building in about an hour, but there's a lot of questions, not bad way, but good questions, so. It's longer than that.
Thank you, as always, for your time and putting in that.
Really appreciate it.
Had to practice my, like, Campbell, little spiel, you know, I'm so used to the bow, and I could do it in my sleep, but this is a different one.
Alright, school board comments. Um, one comment from me, and perhaps other board members have, uh, some comments, I'd like to, you know, send a special recognition to, uh, everyone who helped and supported all the hard work, all the students, the hundred and fifteen or so students for Beauty and the Beast. What a fantastic production that was, I know it was a Herculean effort to get those hundred and fifteen kids ready for such a show. Special, special kudos for, um, Mrs. Wade, Mrs. Culture, and certainly Mrs. Darrett, uh, who went above and beyond on all aspects to make all that happen, and all the countless volunteers, um, who just were amazing and pulling that off. I had the benefit of joining two shows, and those kids did a fantastic job, so, hold on. Anything else?
No.
No?
Okay. Um, last up on the agenda tonight, cause we are not going, actually, no, sorry, two things on the agenda tonight, but we are not going into non-public tonight, which is amazing, uh, is manifest overview. Just real quickly, uh, at the January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five, um, meeting, there were two manifest signatures, uh, one for accounts payable at three hundred and forty-one thousand, three twenty-six and seventeen cents, and we also had a credit card manifest of thirty thousand, one thirty-six and sixty-seven cents. And the final agenda item tonight is community input, so this is our second of two, uh, community inputs this, tonight. I'd like to welcome community to join us. And just name an address, please.
Um, Janine Nagdolph, um, first grade teacher, so I have my staff hat on, but, um, uh, I wanted to hear the discussion about the calendar options first before I said anything, so you were looking for, um, opinions. I wasn't aware that we didn't have any flexibility on the start date, cause of CTE, so-
Yeah.
That was, that was good information. Um, I really liked two PD days before Christmas, I talked to a lot of families who really loved the longer vacation and having a more relaxed vacation with their families, being able to do the traveling and some at-home time. Um, I love the two PD days for teachers, um, it was a, a calm, stress-free way of like getting our mind back to it before we were thrown in with the kids. Um, I would like to suggest maybe considering a, um, a half day for elementary in that first week, because, um, I appreciate you've cut it at four days instead of five, but four days is really still too much for the littles, at least for, like, maybe K through two. Um, by that fourth day, we have them peeing their pants and crying, they're tired. So, I know like the, the holiday winking there is great, that's a nice way to ease it in, but four days of full, four full days for the littles is really tough, so I think we should try to think outside of the box a little bit there to try to help and support them. Um, I think you should keep some early release days, um, in consideration, keep it on the table. Um, because, at least at elementary, we have, uh, very little planning time and we teach all the subjects, so there's very little common planning time for any data work, there's very little just planning time, period, we do most of our planning outside of contract hours, cause there's just, on paper, there's a little bit of time during the day, but that, that actually gets sucked up because our kids need us during the day. One's going home sick and we gotta pack them up, or we have a meeting that couldn't happen at another time, or, um, so, um, I don't know, don't be so fast, I just miss those maybe. Um, and maybe that's just an elementary thing, I don't know, but there are times at the CHS when they have, they have a delayed start for some grades, and sometimes they have early releases for some grades, and some days that aren't necessarily at the other schools because that's what their needs are at that level for those days. We have some different needs at our level, so I think that's worth considering still. Um, and the second subject was just, um, we have some first grade teachers here, and I just want to remind, I don't need to remind you guys this, I wanna remind the public that we're still living in these conditions at GMS that are unacceptable. Um, it feels still very urgent to us to find a solution, we feel like we are teaching in a third-world country over there. Um, we've had, we had the bird this week, we had a burst pipe, what, last week, two weeks ago? That filled multiple large barrels, like the size of this table, of water, coming into the classroom, moving the classroom into half, half of the room, she's still working in half of the room, cause it's still not fixed, or three-quarters of the room. Um, we, um, the unevenness of the floors is becoming noticeably more pronounced. Um, we're still controlling our heat with valves on the pipe, four out of five first-grade classrooms have had roof leaks this year. Um, some of them multiple times, sometimes classes have had their windows open with kids in jackets just to try to get the musty smell out, kids are trying to learn how to write and hold their pencil correctly in cold, because it's so musty, that they're airing out their classrooms. Um, this is not a surprise to any of you. I appreciate the seriousness you've all given it, I just wanna remind the general public that it still feels urgent to us. So that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? Alright, uh, hearing none, we're gonna close second round of community input, and with that, uh, that concludes our meeting tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Mr. Shoemaker, second by Mr. Plansky, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, that carries five zero, and that concludes our meeting tonight, our next meeting is-